Good evening and welcome to everyone that's watching, as well as everyone that's here on this very important night where this board decides how to spend and hear from you on how we spend your very hard-earned money. I call this meeting to order. Let's have our roll call. Stand for the invocation, Mr. Hammond.
Let us pray. O gracious God, our Father, we thank you for this day and for many blessings. Thank you for being here as your servants tonight, and we pray that you will let your Spirit guide us, that all we do and say might be for the betterment of the county in which we live. Amen.
Let's face the fire, please.
Let's reach into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
A motion on the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second vote. Mr. Hammond. Ms. Hammond, we need a vote on the agenda. Thank you. All right, first we have a presentation overview of the 1516 proposed budget. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Before you tonight are three different documents, and the first one is the actual manager's budget message, which is the written form of what will be presented in the presentation in just a moment. Second, you have a copy of the proposed budget ordinance for fiscal year 1516. It is the legal document that at some point in time when you decide to act on the budget in some form, would it be the document that sets into motion the appropriation of revenues and expenditures for the new fiscal year. The third document you have that will be presented on the screens to the audience, the viewing audience and the television audience is the actual PowerPoint, which will overview the proposed budget for next year beginning July 1, which again is the 2015-2016 operating budget for Pitt County Government. On the next screen is a list of your priorities, and I will just cover the key words of these priorities. These have been adopted by you, reaffirmed at the first year. At the top, education, then community safety, economic development, health and welfare, facility and space needs, infrastructure improvements, and then recreational activities. These are all priorities listed by you as the Board of Commissioners. In terms of this year's budget process, the guiding principles that we went by, the staff and myself, we had several factors that we considered, one of them being continuing with the concept of a base budget, that we try to continue with the things that are funded, the services at what levels that are currently out there today from the current year. We reinstituted our pay-for-performance system into our base budget. There was one element of the base budget that we hadn't overlooked, but we hadn't included it because we didn't really have the available revenues up until this year to include it. So we really feel now that we have a true base budget with pay-for-performance included in it. We continued the concept of rightsizing in the budget in terms of making sure that we have the right number of people in the departments to the degree that we could fund them as such. Continue to build upon the structural balance, basically meaning expenditures should be covered by current revenues or anticipated revenues in the new year. Continue to reflect the incremental recovery in the economy, this new normal that as people talk about, we, I don't believe we'll ever get back to the economy from the past where, you know, the tax base was growing four or five percent a year. You know, now we're about one and a half percent in terms of the real estate growing. And then the last guiding principle or factor was the board had asked myself and staff to reflect an emphasis on human capital, that being the employees of the organization throughout all departments in Pitt County Government. In terms of the next slide, the budget overview, this budget maintains an adblocker tax rate of 68 cents, no change in that. Increases current expense funding for both Pitt County Schools and Pitt Community College, and I'll elaborate on that in a minute. As previously stated, reinstates pay-for-performance for all employees in the organization. Reinstates a certification program for law enforcement and inspection staff that allows them to earn up to 4.8% for each type of individual certification they have per the guidelines of the program we've had in the past. Appropriate partial holiday pay, this is a new concept for non-exempt shift workers in public safety, specifically that being the sheriff's office and detention center, as well as 911 and EMS, where the county provides 12 paid holidays per year. A lot of instances, employees are required to work holidays and then due to shift demands can't take those days off. This budget would pay them for six of those 12 holidays if they could not take them off. If they can take them off, then if that can be accommodated, they can take them off, but if not, they'd be paid. The budget also includes a 1% market adjustment or COLA for all employees across the organization. On the next slide or screen, an all-funds overview, the total recommended budget of all funds is almost $216 million. Sorry, the current year's budget, we said in a day, is $215,666,343. What's being recommended to all funds is $223,823,547. This is a 3.78% increase in all funds of the overall operating budget. On the next slide is the general fund of the organization. The general fund is really the component fund within all funds that drives the property tax rate. We had at the beginning of the budget process, in terms of overall requests, $162,566,606 of total requests. I reduced that by about $3.5 million down to a recommended amount of $159,033,156. Within the revenues projected, number of factors, the tax rate, even though the tax rate is 68 cents, .70 cents goes to the Industrial Development Commission, so the balance of that .6730 is distributions to the general fund. Has slight increase to sales tax included in this year's budget, projected at 3.5%. We've realized a payback from the Department of Revenue with the sales payback we've had in the past. Includes a $2 million fund balance plug. Basically, when we talk about a $2 million fund balance plug, we take $2 million of our savings and count on it as a revenue source to fund the overall operating budget so that for every dollar in and every dollar out, they match. We don't expect to spend that $2 million because there are, there's a certain percentage on average across all departments that reverse back, or such as lapse salaries in departments. If we allowed all departments to spend 100% of what they have, then that $2 million fund balance plug would be spent each year or some portion thereof. This also includes a $500,000 fund balance for stabilization within our employee medical fund, which was discussed back during the budget workshops. The current year budget is almost $153 million total, so the percent change within the general fund is 3.96%. Our next illustration, the general fund, in terms of their breakout, general government is almost $114 million, public health, 9.8 rounded, social services, 34.5, court facilities, $285,000, mental health, almost $588,000, again, for a total of $159,033,156. On the next illustration, we have a number of fee changes that are being proposed within animal services, an owner surrender fee of $20. Right now, we don't charge an owner surrender fee, and we want this to be consistent with the fee that's already charged. This is a $20 fee being proposed. Within environmental health, there are a number of fees that are being proposed, and this deals with the water samples. You can see the current fee that's charged, $35 for a water sample, $15 for bacterial, chemical petroleum and lead, and the drinking water wells, $290. And the proposed, you can see, is for a water sample, whether it's chloroform, it's $17, the pesticide petroleum inorganic is $120, and other samples, $85, and irrigation wells, Within the inspections Department, we talked about in the budget workshops, a permit reactivation fee. Right now, when a permit lapses, in most, in a lot of cases, the, either the contractor or the homeowner is required to take out a new permit. We feel this is a more equitable situation, whether it's the current fee of $50 or if they let it lapse entirely and have to take out a new permit, we're proposing to go to $100 for the residential and $200 for the non-residential. Within public health, over the years, they have changed a lot of the fees they charge for different services to a fee based on their actual costs. You see there are three different costs there illustrated for flu shots, a dental procedure, two dental procedures, one at $27, one at $53, one at $19. Again, they'll just charge actual cost rather than a flat fee. In terms of the overall revenue review and its highlights, the pie chart before you gives the estimated revenue, or illustrates the revenues for all funds for the new year. You see that the biggest chunk of that comes from adblocker taxes, almost 49%, and then breaks out intergovernmental second at almost 19%, other taxes, 11%, and then so forth. The next illustration is a further breakout of that pie chart, but in a table format showing the dollar value for, again, adblocker, other taxes, intergovernmental, so forth, going down the bottom, for your total overall all-funds operations of $223,823,547. Again, on the tax rate, remaining the same at 68 cents per $100, showing the distribution I had just covered a moment ago, and the value of our base. If we look at our overall tax base, this past year, we grew in terms of taxable property by $181,339,976 to a total of $11.9 billion, Dwayne?
Nearly $12 billion.
Yeah, nearly $12 billion, about $11.9 billion, and that was a 1.55% increase in that base. As I mentioned on the onset, in years past, when we were pre-recession, we were growing at 3%, 4%, 5%. That's when the economy was not necessarily the realistic economy. It came back into check, and I think what we're realizing now is what I call the new normal. It's being used by a lot of different economists, where I think it's a more stable economy that we will not see crash like we've had in the past. In terms of the next area, expenditure review and highlights, again, discuss the increases to Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, increases to the staffing to the sheriff's office and the detention center, increasing staffing at social services and public health, and again appropriates a COLA or a market adjustment of 1% to all employees across the The pie chart before you is the estimated expenditures across all funds, and we are happy and proud to show and illustrate that public education is our highest area of expenditure appropriation at 24.76%. I know back during the budget workshops, we were asked as staff to provide debt service appropriations. They're not included in this, but even through that, much higher as a percentage in the chart. Otherwise, you can see general government, public safety is number two, general government, and then it breaks out, so on and so forth, as illustrated. On the next slide, again, expenditures from highest to lowest within the all-funds, from general government all the way down to debt service. That debt service on the very bottom there of $17,131,844, a good portion of that is what we appropriated out, or portioned out to education to show both what we're paying on debt service to on facilities for Pitt County Schools and Pitt Community College. Again, illustrated that the county appropriates more than monies just for current expense, capital I, II, and III type expenditures. So on the next slide for education, looking at Pitt County Schools first, in terms of the current expense, the current budget of $35.2 million to round it off, capital A at 750, rent at 340, and then, actually, this one does show debt service of $11.6 million. We added this, like I was discussing during the budget workshops. Recommendation is $36,186,287. This is a 2.62% increase over the current operating budget. On the next slide for Pitt Community College, again, the same illustration showing the current budget for fiscal year 1415, and the recommendation, or let me back up to the Pitt County Schools just for a moment. The net increase in current expense funding in this budget is $950,000, just shy of a million dollars for their operations for a new total of $37,276,287. If we can jump back down to Pitt Community College, again, their existing budget for the current year's, $5,320,326. Again, we show the debt service numbers in there that increases it to about $6.9 million, almost $7 million. Recommendation for this year is an increase of $175,000 or a percent increase of 3.29%. I was asked why the community college percent increase was higher than the Pitt County Schools. Obviously, you're dealing with a much higher base to begin with, the $36 million base, so a percentage proportion across the two. Just because one is getting more money, the percent increase is not necessarily more than the other one. Moving on to fire an EMS, in terms of the public safety area of the budget, the next slide illustrates the 20 different volunteer fire departments in Pitt County. There are three who are requesting consideration for a tax increase. That would be Aiden, Faulkland, and Farmville. And you have, the last column on that chart represents those departments that are requesting consideration for a match for a vehicle purchase. You have Aiden, I'm going to get some help here, Aiden Bethel Fountain Simpson, State and House are looking to buy new vehicles next year. They're looking for a $10,000 appropriation for either a pumper or tanker, which we do under current policy and practice one time every 20 years. Within the EMS fund, the EMS fund is operated on a separate tax rate of 4.6 cents per $100, and this is on top of the 68 cent tax rate that is assessed. This rate is not changing, being held constant. The county operates or has 10 different EMS squads, eight of which are nonprofits, two of which are ran by the county as a division of Pitt County Government. The current overall budget for EMS for the current year is $5,294,131. What is recommended is $5,321,106. Shifting to human resources across the, our organization within county government, there were a total of 40 and a quarter new positions that were requested by the various departments in the county. My recommendation is for seven and three-quarters based upon revenues, based, you know, staying within the tax rate of 68 cents. Within the sheriff's office, recommended two pre-trial enforcement deputies, recommended within the sheriff's department, it says gang deputy one, but I thought we had two. No, one, okay, one. Okay, within the detention center, a pre-officer, that's the Pre-Rape Elimination Act for the detention center, an officer to handle those responsibilities. Then social services, a transportation aide. Within social services, a human services planner. I think in budget workshops, that one had been denoted as possibly a Medicaid fraud specialist, but in talking to DSS, they'd really come back maybe in the following year and ask for that. They find more value in the human services planner in terms of, as a plan for NCFAST changes and modifications to deal with that first. There's currently two people working in the fraud unit right now, and we can look at that later on. Within public health, the billing supervisor is recommended. Then public health, the processing assistant, four at .50, and within planning, a housing coordinator at .25. So all those add up to the seven and three-quarter positions, add up 40 and one-fourth that were requested. On the next slide, just wanted to review the recommended or proposed changes within the sheriff's office and detention center based upon the multi-year pay plan that was laid out in your budget workshops. This is a three-year plan, and in year one, the first two items, all county employees are getting, and that would be the pay-for-performance. That's based upon a annual performance review, based upon a plan that is designed at the beginning of the year, it's based upon a six-month interim review, and a 12-month final review. Based upon your performance on that, an employee will be able to, based upon the anniversary date, earn either 1.2 or 2.4% increase to their base pay. Also, all county employees would receive a 1% COLA. The next two items, the holiday pay, six days for those public safety shift workers that work holidays, could be paid up to six days, and then that fourth item, the certification pay, is up to 4.8%. So technically, an employee could earn a, will get the 1% market adjustment or COLA, could get a 2.4% merit pay, that's 3.4%, and if they had a certification they had received, they could actually get up to 8.2% increase in pay theoretically. In year two, what I had laid out and recommended was that hopefully we will be able to continue the first four things, the merit pay, a COLA, the six holiday pays, and the certification pay that would continue. I do put a caveat on that, depending upon the economy and depending upon the, how the revenues flow into the county. Going back up to year one, I didn't address that last HR classification study. We propose in this year to look at all the law enforcement positions and bring those recommendations directly to the board in probably the late fall. Normally, those recommendations come to me when HR does the classification review process. They're looking at, we look at a third of the positions in the organization a year, so every three years, 100% of all the positions are analyzed to make sure that the base starting pay of that position is a market rate compared to who we are comparing ourselves to. What I had recommended was that once that study is done, it would come to me from HR, but I would then bring it to the board, review it with the board, so you know what the results of the study are, who the comparables were, make sure you're in agreement to it, and then from that, we would use that to, use that to consider implementing as feasible into the following fiscal year, which would be the year two on the slide for fiscal year 16 and 17, that we could implement the study results from that. And basically, normally what we do is we look at pay grades, whether you're going to increase a grade, decrease a grade, or keep it at the same, depending upon how that position is and what percent above market it is. There's different guidelines we have within HR that drives those decisions. Year three, which then would be the following fiscal year, out into fiscal year 1718, hopefully again, we will be able to continue the merit, the COLA, the paid holidays, the incentive pay, but we had said that we would have HR go back and look at the public safety positions one more time, so just in case our comparables maybe had bumped theirs up to make sure that the actions we'd taken, had taken, were still on target for being, having marketable positions. On the next slide, just want to remind the board, there were a number of one-time expenditures that are not included in this budget at this point in time because there were insufficient revenues in terms of, without increasing the tax rate. And all these were, everything from the 911 software upgrade that we're getting ready to implement, different items such as building needs, we're building some grounds, parking lot improvements, mowers, drainage improvements at the district park, greenhouse property cleanup at the district park, courthouse improvements, interior-exterior detention center needs with the camera system, vans for the detention center, elections department needs new voting equipment, farmer's market is requesting an addition. We put a caveat in there for sheriff's office for vehicles, and all that came up to $1.2 million. And we consider these one-time expenditures, they're not reoccurring costs that would, such as a pay raise. If you employ a 1% COLA, that's a reoccurring expenditure that you have to come up with year to year to year because it's built into the base pay. So we're saying that now that we've met our fund balance goal of 20%, and we'll probably will exceed that by the end of this current fiscal year, we said, let's wait until the budget comes in, see how far above the 20% we are, and how comfortable you are as a board to appropriate things, one-time expenditures out of that fund balance, and we're expecting it to be about a million dollars. I did put a caveat there on the bottom, sheriff detention holiday comp payout that's obviously been in the media recently, that that would be considered in some form or fashion, but that 1.2 million then becomes 1.5 plus. We don't expect to have a, unless things go really much better than we anticipate, we don't expect to have that much surplus above the 20%. So it's going to be a decision as to what items on the list you want to fund and not. But these decisions are not influenced by this budget or this public hearing tonight. These are decisions that will come back to the board probably late fall, maybe as late as November, December. Once we have the audit in, and we know what our fund balance position is, then there will be discussion and dialogue from staff to the board on these items. On the next slide is a looking forward slide to the following fiscal year, not the July 1 year that we're looking at, but the year after that, and as we sit here a year from now, I guess is the best way to express that. Property revaluation will be in effect. The tax department is in the process of doing revale. The last time we did it was in 2012. We do it every four years, so January 1, 2016 will be the next effective date of property evaluation. We don't expect to see any major changes in that, unfortunately. Again, we, like I was expressed earlier, our base grew by 1.55%. We probably won't see much, we'll probably be lucky if we see one and a half percent growth in the overall base again as we move into revaluation. You will have the Pitt Community College geo-bond, bonds to consider implementing in next year, as was expressed as part of the bond referendum that went before the voters, that will require a tax increase of 1.85 cents, almost 1.9 cents, 1.6 cents to retire debt service, about $250,000 for operating costs such as the maintenance, electricity, security, and such that we provide for the community college. The employee health fund, as was pointed out in the budget workshops, we are seeing a very high utilization in the current fiscal year we're in. We're hoping to see that stabilized, but if not, we'll need to look at further measures and actions to our self-insured health plan to further stabilize that. Within Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, we will, I'm sure, will be dealing with further capital requests, even though we're getting ready to embark upon a pretty good borrowing coming up to meet their needs. Detention Center, E Block, which is the block that's still not staffed, it's a 96-bed unit as part of the, older part of the jail. That is an item we've been carrying for probably four, five, six years, and as long as the population is manageable, we can avoid opening it, but at some point, it's going to have to be opened. That's about a $1.4 million expenditure as projected by the sheriff. That's the equivalent over a one-cent tax increase if it were to be on the backs of a tax increase. Animal shelter expansion, the board is aware that we're working with an architect now to design the shelter to the needs of the county and hopefully to the partnering agencies and the municipalities who choose to partner with us in retiring the costs on that via the animal licensing. That'll be in that year. And then the last one will be the radio and paging system improvements as we look to correct, improve the deficiencies in the existing radio and paging system we have here in Pitt County. Coming near the end here. So in terms of the public hearing tonight, the purpose of the public hearing is to allow any members of the public an opportunity to be heard on the fiscal year 2015-2016 operating budget and budget ordinance. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Attorney, if you'll read to us the rules for the public hearing.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. Each person in a public hearing will be allowed up to five minutes to speak. Please state your name and your address prior to speaking. All comments should be informative and constructive. Inappropriate comments, profanity, or personal attacks would not be tolerated.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. If there's anyone here that's part of a group speaking on a single issue and you want to appoint a speaker to come and take the time, talk, and then the group can rise at the end, you may do that. If not, you may, we may go one at a time, as the pleasure of the citizens, however you want to do that. So the first name on the list is Dr. Cato.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
It's a pleasure to be here before you once again. Dr. Lionel Cato, I'm representing the Pitt County Principals and Assistant Principals Association. I'm Dr. Lionel Cato. Association, currently the principal of North Pitt High School. My address is 2841 Holly Glenn Drive, Apartment A, here in Greenville. I want to thank you all for your generous support of Pitt County Schools. Recently, our superintendent, Dr. Linker, and assistant superintendent for finance, Michael Cowan, presented a request to the board for an increase of approximately 2.8 million dollars for the upcoming school year. They also shared with you all various impending budget constraints and reductions due in part to the opening of charter schools here in Pitt County, teacher assistant cuts, and cuts from the state. While acknowledging these impending budget concerns, Mr. Cowan and Dr. Linker have managed to absorb the cuts through attrition and operational reductions. Of the 2.8 million dollar request, there was a proposal for roughly 1.5 million dollars in funding to maintain our current level of operations. It is important to acknowledge that Mr. Elliott originally presented a proposal for an increase of 750,000 dollars and subsequently increased the proposal to 950,000 dollars in support of our fixed cost increases, which were roughly 1 million dollars. We are very grateful that this happened, and again, we do thank you for your investment in public education. However, with an impending cut of 584,000 to our state low wealth funding, the 950,000 will not allow us to fully maintain our current level of operations. The state low wealth funding is used to fund teacher positions only, positions in areas of special education, career and technical education, academically gifted, the arts, limited English, as well as a few regular teaching positions. These reductions are in addition to the reductions we'll see due to charter schools and teacher assistant reductions, which when totaled together could potentially mean the reduction of 47 positions across Pitt County schools. I ask that as you draw close to finalizing next year's budget, that you please consider two things. First, along with the other budget reductions facing our schools, which have been managed very well by our finance department and our superintendent, the additional 50,000 dollars will go a long way to help us maintain our current level of services and requested in fixed costs. Secondly, the reduction in low wealth funding of 584,000 is something that I also like you to consider as you deliberate. This particular cut would deal an even larger blow to our personnel allotments than we've already felt. If there is any way that the county commissioners could find money to help the schools cover the reduction in whole or part, it would be greatly appreciated. This money is not being used to fund any new programs, but is going to help us maintain our current level of staffing. Our county commissioners, excuse me, our county administrators and I enjoy working in Pitt County schools and working on behalf of our wonderful students. We all want to make Pitt County a better place and help our community progress and prosper. Anything that the county commissioners can do to help us continue performing this good work on behalf of children will be welcome. I do thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and as always, I thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Dr. Cato. Kathy Herring.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Herring, Circle Drive in Greenville, and I'm the president of Parents for Public Schools of Pitt County. Our mission is to strengthen Pitt County public schools by engaging, educating, and mobilizing our community. On behalf of parents and students, Parents for Public Schools would like to thank the Pitt County Board of Commissioners and the county manager for all you do for education. You appropriate over 35 million dollars in property tax revenues to Pitt County schools to be used for the operation of our school system and the instruction of our children. This investment exemplifies that education is this county's number one priority, and we commend the Board of Commissioners for that. Members of our Board of Directors and graduates of our parent leadership program represent schools, organizations, and constituencies across our county. Those present tonight are here with me Carolyn Reed, Melissa Adamson with Farmville Central High School, Juan Garcia from Aiden Elementary, Clarissa Lee, Pat Tolles in Aiden, Jim Sisler with United Way of Pitt County, Robin Daly with Student Success Academy, Robert Moore, a retiree, Lori Irish with Ridgewood Elementary, and Lisa Reardon with EBA Cock. We also have board members representing CMF's Hope Middle School, DH Conley, and the Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce. Also, Colleen Dibble is with us tonight. She's our new executive director. She has a child at Wintergreen Primary. We come together this evening to share with you our thoughts on the local budget. The loss of approximately 500 students to a new charter school and reductions in state funding are concerning to us as we consider the budgetary impacts on our schools. It's important to note that the district is cutting up to 47 teaching and teaching assistant positions to address the reductions created by the opening of the charter school. In addition, our district is facing cuts of 13 teaching assistants due to potential reduction in state funds for those positions. We are satisfied that the district has cut in every possible area to be fiscally responsive to these changing conditions. At the May 18th board meeting, the county manager presented you a revised budget that brings the district's increase up to 950,000 dollars. And for that, we'd like to publicly thank you and the county manager. While I would prefer to be here tonight to ask for additional funds to recruit, develop, and provide additional compensation for our teachers, or to fund a great new initiative that would elevate student achievement in our district, I'm here instead to ask that the commissioners consider two additional requests. First, please consider taking one final look to increase our school appropriations by an additional 50,000 dollars to keep our current level of service. And second, please consider finding a feasible alternative to help cover the reduction of 583,000 in low wealth funding. Low wealth funding has been provided to work in conjunction with local funding for areas of the state that are below the average in educational dollars. In Pitt County, these funds are used solely to fund teaching positions. We are concerned with the cuts that Pitt County Schools is already making, that 12 additional cuts in the areas discussed earlier will adversely impact student achievement in our district. On behalf of the parents of Pitt County, I want to thank you again for your investment in our children and our schools. As a community, we are making education a top priority, and we know you share our belief that we owe our children, our area businesses, and our communities adequately funded schools. Thank you so much for your consideration and allowing us to speak out on this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Herring. Ms. Irish.
Lori Irish, Bancroft Circle, Winterfield. I, first of all, would like to thank you all, the county commissioners, for all that you continue to do for our children of Pitt County Public Schools. I come to you tonight as a parent of a rising second grader. I wish for you to consider the additional funding to aid in keeping the EC teachers available in our classrooms. I understand that Pitt County School uses the funding from low wealth to fund the EC teachers, but I also understand that that has significantly been reduced for next school year. Without the assistance of an EC teacher in my daughter's classroom this year, which is already overcrowded with 24 students, one of which is an exceptional child, I truly believe that her class year would not have been as successful as it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reardon.
Hello, my name is Lisa Reardon. I'm at 318 Dupont Circle, Greenville. I have a child who attends EBA Cock Middle School, and as a parent and an active member of Parents for Public Schools, I would like to thank you, the Pitt County Commissioners, and the county manager for making public education a high priority in your funding decisions. Your may increase in the proposed appropriations is greatly appreciated. I came here tonight to ask you to consider two additional requests. First, please help Pitt County Schools keep its current level of service by increasing our schools appropriations by an additional 50,000 dollars. Second, please find a feasible alternative to help cover the reduction in low wealth funding. I am particularly concerned over this loss because my child benefits from the academically gifted education program and from the Coral Arts Program. She plans to be involved in the art and Spanish programs and is signed up to be a peer helper in the exceptional children program. I am also concerned especially about the programs for those children with limited English abilities, as my child has told me numerous times about the struggles of one of her classmates. Again, as a parent, I want to thank you for everything you do for the students of Pitt County, and any additional considerations would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, I'll let you pronounce the end of it.
Come on, you should have it pronounced. Can I give you these?
My name is Emily Kleindst, and I'm the president of Pitt County Association of Educators. I live at 559 Blackjack Simpson Road in Greenville. First, I do want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all of you for coming out to our schools, your schools, last month to kick off our Adopt a Commissioner campaign. While I was only privileged enough to work with Ms. Ward at my school, Faulkland Elementary, the students and staff in each of the schools have had nothing but wonderful things to say about your visits. If you have time, I hope you'll actually visit some of our end-of-year celebrations, awards days, graduations, but if not, we do hope to continue this campaign throughout the 15, 16 school year. Our community collaboration with you, as well as our school board and county office personnel, stands to show that we are united and we want what's best for every student that comes through our doors. Next, I'd like to talk more about those students who do come through our doors and how we can recruit and retain the quality teachers who serve them. Increase the teacher supplement. The current teacher supplement is 5 percent, a supplement that has been without increase for over 12 years. Teacher supplement is vital to school systems' missions to build great classrooms. To build great classrooms, you must first build great teachers. To build great teachers, the school system must recruit, retain, and compensate those great teachers. The first handout that I've given you shows the average teacher supplement for counties that are surrounding Pitt. And as you can see, a teacher can cross the county line in several directions and make anywhere from 400 to 1,800 dollars more. This doesn't even take into account those teachers who are mobile, who are willing to move to maybe Wake County, Charlotte Meck, or out of state. The second handout compares Pitt County Schools' average supplement to the state average and counties with the same average daily membership. As you can see on that handout, we are 400 dollars below the state average and over 900 dollars below counties that are like us. This speaks volumes. In order for Pitt County Schools to take the next step forward, an investment in teacher compensation will be required. Last, the state has removed 583,000 of our low wealth dollars. In this county, all of our money is used for positions, just as the others have said, for regular classrooms, exceptional children, academically gifted, ESL, and the arts. With a cut this size, we're talking about 12 positions. You may ask, why should we fund state reductions that are coming from the state? And I say to you again, that's 12 teachers. Teachers that may be sitting in this room could be me. With the already significant cuts to teacher assistants, another 12 instructional positions lost will be significant to our kids, and our kids are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Creach.
My name is Suzanne Creach, 2140 Ivy Road in Greenville. I'm here tonight because of the Pitt County Sheriff's Budget. It's very concerning to me, not only as a residence of Pitt County, but also as a business owner in Pitt County. Not only do we deserve, but we should expect and demand to feel protected here in Pitt County. Over, since the sheriff's office has done an outstanding job of attempting to ensure that the county is safe by having deputies patrolling and being visible in outlined areas, since Sheriff Else has taken office, there has been a noticeable decrease, 11 percent in crime. Since then, I've learned that some of the deputies bring home less than 500 dollars in a two-week period. That's unacceptable. That's unacceptable for any of them. These deputies need to be paid for the time that they work, not comped. Being comped is saying, "I promised to pay." These deputies aren't promising to work, they're there. When the murders happened in Farmville, they were there and they worked hours and hours of overtime to make sure that this crime was solved so you and I and your families could be safe. After this crime was solved, I learned that two other people had been victims of these gentlemen. If the sheriff's department had not have gotten them off the street, who's to say that our families could not have been the next victims? It's unacceptable not to pay them. The safety of the community is very important when people and businesses want to move into this area. Other agencies within the county are being looked after by you all, the county commissioners. The sheriff's department and the deputies should expect no less from you all. To pay this in money for a study, to me, is personally ridiculous because you can look at Greenville PD and see what they're being paid for the same job. We need to support these deputies. We need to plan for retention of the deputies that we have, looking after them. We can't do that if we don't pay them. Right now, what the deputy's current entry salary is, they can go to Vaden as a public safety unarmed officer and make the same thing. No certifications required. They may not have a four-year degree, but I guarantee they have hours and hours of training and education involved, and we need to maintain them. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak, and please take this into consideration because we have good, hard-working deputies out there, and we need to maintain them and keep them so we can all feel safe at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cove.
My name is Nancy Colville, and first of all, I'd like to say that I second everything that Ms. Creach just said, because that is why I'm here today, to speak in favor of paying the sheriff now what is owed, that they have already earned. That needs to happen, and there's money somewhere that you can pull through to make this happen. And the other thing that really bothers me a lot is that you only saw fit to have one deputy, gang deputy, because to me, gangs in the schools in Greenville are a problem, have been a problem, and this is part of education. You talk about being the education supporters. Well, gang prevention is part of keeping the children and the teachers safe so they can learn not to have these young people solder into gangs early in life. So that, to me, really needs to be addressed. And in doing this research, I looked at the one-quarter sales tax that you have taken, and it was done in 2007, and it was strictly for brick and mortar. And I wish that you would consider taking some of that one-quarter cent sales tax money for, to address other areas of education, like teacher salary, deputy salary, for gang prevention. There are so many things, and I found out that this one-quarter cent tax is not, the legislators did not say it has to be for education. The Board of Commissioners at the time made it the way you have it now. I wish that you all were looking to this, because I am told, I am told that this one-quarter cent sales tax doesn't have to be just for brick and mortar. It can be for other areas of education. That's a possibility. We're always scrambling to see where- We're always scrambling to see where money, where we can get money. Well, this is, might be the answer. But please consider increasing the, at least one more deputy for the gangs. This is a problem in Pitt County, not only for the children in schools and the teachers, but for everybody, because gangs hurt people, and they're connected with drugs a lot of times, and they hurt citizens as well. And think about this, because everybody's talking about, well, why the sheriff is not dealing very well with his budget. I cannot imagine how a sheriff, any sheriff, who's in, can set enough money for overtime when you don't know from one moment to the other in his business, what's going to happen? What is going to happen? And when something happens, they all have to go, whether it's in, excuse me, in the middle of the night, in the middle of the day, whether it's a day off, it's a holiday. So I do think that you need to pay them and pay them now, because like everybody else, they need to cover their expenses. And I gave you a copy of this, just, I know you're busy, I know you have a lot of things on your plate. So I wrote this letter to the public forum, in the Daily Reflector, they published it today, and I figured you probably didn't have time to read it, but I took time to, to look at all the money that Pitt Community College is getting for brick and mortar, and their attendance is being reduced by 2%. And, and read it and look at these figures, because it clearly shows that they are getting a whole lot of money and going down in attendance. And so, to me, our first obligation is to K through 12, K to 12, and then our safety. And there's a whole lot of brick and mortar at Pitt Community College that is just, what, somebody's ego to compete with all the community colleges? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cove. Ms. Reed?
Thank you. Chairman Webb, may I distribute this to the, a handout? I'm from Parents for, Parents for Public School of Pitt County, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about public school funding. But I want to address a specific issue, and that is return on investment. And what I mean by that is what is Pitt County getting for all this money that's given to the public schools? I think it's important that we remind ourselves of the ultimate return on investment and our ultimate goal in funding the public schools. Now, I've distributed a handout, which is two pages, and these are the scholarship reports for the 2013-2014 year. I picked these up at a public listening session in Farmville on education. And if you'll see on the first page, this is the academic scholarships for the 2013-2014 year, the last year that this is available for. And the total of all scholarships offered is $22,548,092. Pretty impressive amount. If you look at the second page, it's athletic scholarships, and this is broken down by year. For 2014, it's $396,456, and for the last three years, it's over $1 million. This is return on investment, but this is just the tip of the iceberg. For every student that gets a scholarship, there are hundreds of students that are being admitted to both two-year and four-year colleges, some the first and their families to go to college. For every student that gets a scholarship or goes to college, there are hundreds that are getting certifications in trades like computers, welding, automotive, that will graduate from Pitt County Schools, ready to enter our workforce and contribute financially. And there are thousands of students who will graduate from high school this year. There's been a tremendous increase in the past few years in graduation rates. These are all direct benefits, returns on our investments to the public schools as the graduates and the college graduates come into our economy. And even though these college graduates may go away because of our strong family structure in Pitt County, generation after generation being here, we know that a lot of these students will return with their time, their talent, and their treasure to Pitt County. So I want to thank you for all that you've done for Pitt County Schools and their funding, but I want to urge you to allocate as much as you possibly can, because from where I'm standing, dollar for dollar, you can't get a better return on your investment than investing in public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Piner?
Good evening. My name's Lauren Piner, 1811 Bradford Drive, Greenville. I am a social studies teacher at South Central High School, just finished my fourth year last week. The issue I would like to discuss with you is the increase in teacher pay supplement that was brought to you by Dr. Linker and Michael Cowan. We have not received a pay supplement increase in 12 years. In addition, those who choose to teach in Pitt County receive a much lower supplement than surrounding and comparable counties. Competitive supplements for teachers in our county can help us attain three goals: to recruit, retain, and reward those who have chosen this career. Along with numerous benefits associated with having a large university in our community, it also means that we have a very transient community. ECU produces more teachers than any other institution in our state. However, the low teacher supplement average of $1,900 alludes to the fact that we have a very new teaching force. I can say, like from experience, finishing my fourth year, I feel like I just got my sea legs about me. So it's very important that we get teachers to stay in the classroom. We're spending money to train them so they can get their standard professional two license, and then they leave us. While we're experiencing large economic and population growth in certain areas of our county, there are unfortunately not as many opportunities for those of us who are newer to the profession within the community. I see it every year, personally, with people that I teach with, as well as my friends. We're employed in Pitt County for a few years, and then the siren song of Wake County, Charlotte Mecklenburg, Chapel Hill, Carboro rings in their ears. More opportunities, more things to do, as well as a higher teacher pay supplement. I'm not naive, I understand the cost of living is a lot higher in those places, but a raise in a supplement could be the deciding factor in swaying teachers to stay, embed themselves in our community, and become the mentors that our new teachers need. Even amongst the veteran teachers in our community, I know several that drive across the county line to Wilson, Craven, as well as Nash Rocky Mount, all which have higher supplements than us for that pay. Many people say an extra $500 is not enough to make a difference. For millennials like me, those of us that graduated right when the bottom fell out in the years surrounding 2008, we're, we have the largest amount of student loan debt in the history of the United States. Trust me when I say every dollar counts. This is why we're putting off buying real estate. We're putting off getting married later in life, because, like I said, we have those debts. So don't think that any amount is too little. Like I said, everything counts. I understand there's always not enough money to go around and too many hands sticking out, and you want to make everyone happy. If not this year, please begin to consider it for years coming forward. I know your job's never done. I thank you for your commitment to our community.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
My name is Carla Hart. I live at 2253 Tulse Cove Road in Winterville. I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to stand here before you this evening. I'd also like to thank Commissioners Webb and Colson for your support of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, and I'd like to speak to all of you in support of bringing the pay for these individuals up to a level that is equal to the pay for Greenville Police Department, the ECU Police Department, and Biden Police Department, or Biden Hospital Police Department. I'd like you to keep in mind that the individuals who work for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office are our citizens. They live here and they work here. There's been a lot of reference to studies of deputies and sheriffs in other counties, but our deputies don't live in Alamance County. Their children go to school here, in our county. They pay their taxes here, in Pitt County. They buy their groceries here. The pay stub that Sheriff Elks showed during his budget request on May 5th was for a deputy that had been employed since 2008. Let me repeat that. It was a deputy that had been employed since 2008. In that example, the individual, after deducting taxes and insurance costs, takes home less than $800 every two weeks. We're asking our citizens to try and live on less than $800 every two weeks. Without an increase, wait, I'm sorry, even with a proposed increase, with a 1% cost of living, and Mr. Manager, I disagree with you in terms of everyone getting the full amount of a pay-for-performance increase, but in the best-case scenario, even with a pay-for-performance, with a proposed increase in insurance costs, our deputies are going to realize a net loss in their pay for the coming year. And that, friends, is just unacceptable. That is just not right. I'm going to ask you to imagine that it's the middle of the night and you hear the sound of gunshots. Your heart starts to pound. You wonder is somebody trying to break into your home? Is someone trying to hurt you? Are they trying to hurt your neighbors or your friends? You dial 911, and then you wait. The shots continue. You hear shouts. You're afraid to leave your home, and you continue to wait. And the seconds drag on, and nobody comes. Because the deputy that would come to respond is on the other side of the county, already helping someone else who called before you, and there simply isn't anybody to come to your aid. Imagine, because it's a very real scenario, it could easily happen to any one of us. And nobody wants to see that happen. Will it take a tragedy for us to realize that we have to pay a decent salary in order for people to want to work in this kind of position? Ms. Ward, you indicated last week at the commissioner meeting that you thought the Sheriff's Office needed to go out and recruit more. You stated that when you looked at qualifications required to be a deputy, that when you compared those qualifications to a teacher, that the requirements weren't that great. I'd like to suggest to you that finding people who are willing to take an oath to protect and serve our citizens, and to find people who are willing to lose their life in the line of duty, takes a very unique set of skills. It isn't simply a matter of recruitment, it's a call to service. Much the same way that teaching is a call to service, each of these professions sadly is underpaid and they're undervalued.
You can wrap up, Ms. Hart.
Mr. Garrus, you had indicated in an earlier budget workshop last week that you have a concern that any pay-for-performance or cost-of-lim increase be available to all county employees in order to be fair to everyone. I'm very much in order, in favor of being fair, however, I'm not in favor of the county manager getting an increase, nor am I in favor of increasing your stipends of $1,100 a month, because I don't think your stipends were ever intended to be a salary, they were intended to be an addition. So I'm going to ask you to consider giving up your monthly stipend as a good faith effort to the members of the county. And then I have just one more point to make, and I appreciate your allowing me the time to make it. Earlier this year, at the recommendation of the county manager, this board made a commitment to hire 31 full-time positions at DSS, an agency that has been highly criticized. And Ms. Ward, again, I don't mean to pick on you, but on May 5th, you pointed out that there was a big difference between a recurring expense and a one-time expense. And I have to question how we could have made, as a county, a commitment to 31 new positions at DSS as opposed to maybe looking at part-time staffing or moving staffing around as a way of doing that. And then last but not least, Mr. Colson and Mr. Webb, you've talked about the threat of gang violence in Pitt County. It is probably the greatest threat that we face. And to hope that criminals are going to leave us and go, and I don't want to pick on Alamance County, but it has been used several times as a point of reference in comparison, but to hope that they're going to leave us and go there is ridiculous, and it's a way of burying our heads in the sand. Cell Block E in the detention center is going to have to be opened. As Pitt County continues to grow in population, and as Biden continues to grow and expand its services, and as ECU continues to grow and attract new students, additional populations will also be attracted to our county. Some of these new people will bring talent and valuable contributions. Some of them will prey on others. If you continue to ignore the needs of this county, if you continue to put our safety at risk by expecting our deputies to work for so little money, then shame on you and shame on us for allowing it, because by doing so, you're hurting all of us. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Adamson.
My name's Melissa Adamson. I live at 2220 Pentel Court in Greenville, North Carolina. I have a rising 10th grader at Farmville Central High School. I'm also an active member of Parents for Public Schools. I work at United Way, where student success is our main priority in an area where we make a considerable investment, and I am expecting a future Pitt County School student in August. At least, that's what they say. I'm hoping for July, late July. I would like to thank the Pitt County Commissioners and the county manager for making public education a priority in your funding decisions. Your may increase in the proposed appropriations is greatly appreciated. As an employee of an organization that makes funding decisions and investments in our students, I can really appreciate how difficult the budgeting decision process can be and how much time and energy goes into making those decisions behind the scenes. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider two additional requests. First, please consider taking one final look to increase our school appropriations by additional $50,000 to keep our current level of service. Even though we have had an excellent experience, my family's had an excellent experience in Pitt County public schools, I can't imagine that level of service continuing and those opportunities being there for my unborn daughter when she's ready for school in five years. And second, please consider finding a feasible alternative to help cover the reduction in low-wealth funding. I'm particularly concerned over this loss as my child benefits from the regular instruction and arts educations programs at Farmville Central High School. My rising sophomore is a math and science whiz, those subjects come very easily to him. He does not care for writing or English, at least he didn't until this year, when he took creative writing with Ms. Intron and English honors with Mr. Coffey. Although he thoroughly enjoyed his art instruction, I think I'm most impressed and surprised with his first year of high school and his enthusiasm with, and change of heart with writing and English. He, since taking He, since taking creative writing with Ms. Centron, he's since joined the poetry club, which is something that he would not have done if it wasn't for her excellent instruction. And during his second semester, when he was taking honors English with Mr. Coffey, I can't tell you the number of times he came home and talked about the lessons they were learning and the topics that they were discussing. And for me, it's particularly exciting because I can see his interest and the values that he's placing on those subjects growing. And I don't want that to stop for him and I don't want it to stop for any of our other students across the district. Again, as parents, we sincerely thank you for everything you do for the students at Pitt County. And any additional considerations would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone who did not sign up that wish to speak at this time? Okay, seeing that, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We'll move on to the consideration of the budget ordinance and comments from the board. Ms. Owens.
Mr. Webb, as I've said many times, glad that our public perceives that you and Mr. Colson has been supportive of increases for the officers and other employees for so many years. I'm not looking in the acclamase, but I think the record will reveal that I have supported the increased salaries for sheriffs. But the sheriff is nodding his head, so evidently he consents. And other employees. But being, having heard what I've heard here tonight, I'd like for the sheriff to get me the number of deputies that he's got that only makes $500 every two weeks. And in that in mind, and having heard the other presentations that's been presented here tonight, public... it's my privilege to try to serve the people of this county. But it's... and it's good to have you come and show us what your feelings are and express your attitudes towards it. And I've always felt that a public hearing was for the purpose of a board listening. And I'm not ready tonight to make a decision on this proposed ordinance, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like for us to bring this back at another date, at your directions, and give me some time to ponder what I've listened to tonight.
And motion to table, Mr. Owens.
I think some others might want to speak. And then I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
We'll start at the end and just work our way around. Appears we're moving towards comments anyways. Mr. Hammond, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. I'm a little disturbed considering the amount of scholarships that have been offered to the schools in this county that were rejected and turned down. That bothers me a lot.
Ms. Williams.
Oh, you finished that? You finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
I wasn't aware that he was finished. Manager Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that there were two positions at the... for the Sheriff's Department for gang?
I think I misspoke. It's one. One gang recommendation.
I was trying to find out of clarity. Was it one or two?
One.
I agree with Mark.
Mr. Colson.
Well, again, when it comes to sheriff deputies, one of the comments that was made during the presentation by the manager was that there'd be HR classification study due this late fall that was based on market rate. I don't care about market rate. I don't care about the adjacent counties. I care about Pitt County. And as the statements were made a little while ago, is they live in our community, they buy groceries in our grocery stores, they go to our churches, they serve us. And we owe it to them. And I also said at the last meeting that if you go back to 2000, when I was first elected, I made the comment that we have been pushing off and pushing off and pushing off, doing what I think is the right thing to do in the Sheriff's Department for all these years. Here it is 15 years later and we're still behind the egg ball. Mr. Manager, I am extremely disappointed that there was no additional amounts of deputies that could be found or money found for the gangs. I'm disappointed that we, as a board, this last meeting, decided that collectively, that we weren't going to do the payout for holiday and comp time, which I don't understand. That's money that, as I understand it, is available this year because not all salaries, not all pay was paid. That money is available right now. So it ought to be paid right now, before this year is over. Don't push it off into next year. And we shouldn't ever let it rear its ugly head again. On top of that is if the county had a... the Sheriff's Department only had a budget overtime of $120,000 this last year, I did not see the line item for what we have this coming year. I'd like to know what that is. And if $120,000 didn't do it, and you take $346,000 plus 120, that's a half million, then it ought to be a half million. I don't run a business that way. I don't run it on fictitious numbers. Quite frankly, I don't have the luxury of going out there and being able to tax for money by raising it. We've got to earn it. We've got to go out there and compete with many other businesses. But at the same time, there are similarities. It's high time that we do something with the pay structure. And again, if we don't do something to change what we have currently had put before us, I will vote against it. And I encourage other county commissioners to do so.
Mr. Owens, do you have anything further?
Yeah, yes. I should have mentioned this while I go, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Colson, you got a motion.
Not at this time, babe.
Go ahead, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But I said at the last meeting that... and I made an inquiry about comp time, vacation days, overtime, that when a time is earned by an employee, that that employee ought to be paid for that time. Now, that's one of the things that I want to look at, that I'm thinking about. And I was going to bring that up too because I thought that it's understood that I felt that way, that when it is earned time, it should be paid. And I think it's behooves this board to labor under that concept.
Ms. Ward.
Thank you. The... in line with the comp time and the overtime and not being paid, it's my understanding that this is not going to be revisited in the next budget year. It's going to be revisited and we're going to look closely at it and do... and act upon it, is my understanding, by the end of this summer or the beginning of the fall, at one of our meetings. And that is along with some other items that were listed that we're going to look at once the budget is in place. And I'm not sure, but it's... I think that we don't ever have to vote on the budget at a hearing meeting. That is an option for us usually. I think, don't we direct that the budget go back? If there's anything that you've heard that you want to look at and then brought back to us at our next meeting? Is that the procedure that we usually follow?
Yes, ma'am. You can either adopt it at the night of the public hearing or we could adopt it at your next meeting on June 15th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was happy to note that we do have a pay-for-performance increase that was implemented and certainly the COLA that we would give to all of our employees. I believe, I'm from the old school of thought that if you work for something, you should get paid. And this is in reference to the Sheriff's Department. I do understand that during the audit budget review, that this process would probably take place in terms of looking to pay for our deputies. And I certainly think that that is most appropriate. The view on the teachers' increase, I think that certainly, I can understand the need. We have adopted education as our number-one priority. And certainly, I think that we have been adhering to that. We have increased the educational funding over the years and we're going to continue, and we have continued to do that. However, we did receive some bad news from our state legislators. And I think certainly, in terms of funding and having to shoulder some of that responsibility financially on our backs, it's certainly a burden. And we have said that, as an adopted goal, that we did not want any unfunded mandates, and that happened. I'm from the school of thought that if, during the process of our audit review, that we were certainly looking to the Sheriff's Department requests and any other that we can do in terms of making this happen to pay for those individuals who have worked and give them their necessary pay. And it did bother me to understand that there were some people making $500 and $800 to live. And that's sad. So certainly, we're hoping, Mr. Manager, that we will be looking into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garris.
Yes, I want to thank each one that has come this evening and spoke. We appreciate your input. Your input this evening was very professionally presented, and we appreciate that. As far as education is concerned, education is our number-one priority. And I think every member of this board would like to be able to allocate more to education. We have increased education this year by $950,000, which I know is less than what was requested, but that is a significant amount, $950,000 to K through 12 and then another $175,000 to Pitt Community. I am equally concerned, as every one of you, with this reduction in the low-wealth funding from the state. And we need to be working hard lobbying our state legislators about that because I don't think they've approved their budget yet because they need to put that back in. The state cannot expect to take things out of their budget and expect the counties to pick it up because the counties simply cannot afford to do it. Scott, I would like to learn a little bit more about this $50,000 that was mentioned that said to keep the current level of services. I didn't exactly understand that when we increased it by 950. You can give that to me later because I didn't exactly understand that. I do think that, as we look at this budget, there are some positive things. And number one is that we are increasing Pitt County school funding by 2.6%. We're increasing Pitt Community College funding by 3.3%. We have also built in a pay-for-performance of 1.2% to 2.4% and a 1% market adjustment. So that means almost all of our employees will be getting from a 2.2% to a 3.4% raise. And I'm very supportive of that. I think it is very well-deserved and we need to make that happen. And we're going to make that happen. We've also increased... included the certification incentive pay, which is another 4.8%. And we have also... this board is also committed. We committed at our last meeting that as soon as we determine what our fund balance is, which is going to be the latter part of the summer, September timeframe is normally when we get that number. And that number, we are expecting to exceed our 20% goal. And then we're going to take that money, that money over the 20%, and we're going to distribute it to various projects that we agree are appropriate. And we have also listed several of those. And as far as I am personally concerned, at the top of that list is going to be this $346,000 for the Sheriff's Department holiday and comp payout. I think that needs to be at the top of the list. And also, Scott, as I've said before, we need to look at other county departments to see how much they have built up. And we need to include that in that number also. Now, I know that people want us to move immediately, but you've got to move in a reasonable, planned manner. And I am reluctant to start paying out money that I'm not sure we have. And once we determine what our fund balance is, we will have a much better understanding of what we do have. And then I would surely be in agreement with moving forward with paying out to the sheriffs, the deputies, that overtime pay, holiday pay, comp time pay, and anyone else that's earned it.
Thank you, Mr. Garris. Mr. Farley, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is Sheriff Elk still in the audience?
Yeah.
Sheriff Elk, I just wanted to say that was an excellent letter to the editor that appeared today in the Daily Reflector. You do your department and yourself service with your knowledge and your ability to express things that need to be out there and need to be cleared up. I stand with Commissioner Garris on looking favorably on your request that you made last time you were here. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we'll be approving this budget tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. Just got a couple of quick comments and then we'll move on. When it comes to the comp time, I think that what Mr. Garris expressed was good. We do have to move in a methodical, fiscally irresponsible way. That does need to be the top priority, to pay the people for the work they did. And also, I think we need to change the culture of that too, into doing that all the time versus going to a comp time. Because not just are they not getting paid when they're working, it's also an unfunded liability that's on us. And that could really hem us up fiscally. And so I think it's just good business if we switch more to a pay-as-you-go versus a comp time banking system. And when it comes to... Mr. Colson said, we've got to compete in the market. And we've had it good for a while. And the time is coming. The talent pool is shrinking. The abilities to recruit and retain is shrinking because you can go right over... not just the hospital. That's just staying in the safety part of it. But you can go work at Patheon or Metrix or these other places and make $15,000 more a year to do much less dangerous work and work much more regular hours and have your holidays off than you can if you go to work at the jail or as a deputy. So I think we need... we really need to focus on the market that we compete in and not across the state because that's not where it happens. I think we need to be very intentional and we need to be swift, not doing studies a year or two down the road. We know what we need to pay them. And I mean, there's some of them that are looking at bankruptcy just from minimal revenue to their home, not outlandish spending on their part. So if we want to have the best, if we want to have talent, we have to pay the talent. And right now, we're not. And they're not seeking our Sheriff's Office out for employment. They're going to other municipalities locally. And you've all heard what I've said 100 times about it, so I won't belabor it further. And as far as the school stuff goes, I'd like to hear more about that $50,000 as well and some consideration to the teacher supplement. We have public safety as number two and education as number one. It looks from the list here that even if we subtract the $2 million of fund balance out, that we increased revenues low over $4 million this year, yet we're still struggling in our top two priorities as a county. I kind of feel maybe we should have looked at them first and then saw what was left afterwards, especially with the thought of losing 12 teachers. And we'll say the county goes above and beyond and funds, I think, 50 teaching positions. That's a state responsibility that we've taken on. And it just seems to be the trend that the state is pushing more and more things down to counties. And it may be something that we have to consider. I don't know where the money will come from on the 583. I feel like we can address the $50,000. And as far as the teacher supplement, I think that's something we need to consider too. And maybe we need to rework the budget a little bit. Obviously, I don't feel like the board is going to approve it tonight. But I think we need to be very intentional in education and in our public safety because those are the two bedrocks of our county. And I think... I don't think that we have the revenue capability to bring the Sheriff's Office up to Greenville PD pay this year. office up to Greenville PD pay this year, or ECU, or Vitent. But I do think we do have the capabilities to move things around and start on a path of more than 1 percent, three to five per year over the next several years to get it up to where it needs to be before we realize the talent deficit that we're looking at. You can see it coming. And those, and this is the part about it, the younger officers, like it or lumped, is where your lawsuits are sourced out of. They're new, they don't know as much as the veterans. And so, now, when you have younger officers and are now going to be training the young officers, it's just going to be a domino effect, and I don't want us to see that in the county. And so, we're in a position where we can do something now. If we don't, we're just going to see a problem down the road. Those are all the comments I had on it. Mr. Owens, you had a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along that line, I think that we said at our last meeting that the manager brought us back a budget, which this board had laid out to do along the lines that you just said, Mr. Chairman, dealing with three topics about increases. We know what they are. I'd like for that to come back to us, and I'm going to make a motion to this, but what keeps getting back to me is this, if we have the money on the hand, on hand, to pay this comp time, holiday time, I keep getting back to the point I said, when it was earned. And I don't know anything about the, but we've got employment regulations telling you when these things should have been paid. I'm concerned that it hadn't been paid previously. I'm concerned that it hadn't, and I made the illusion back, maybe it's the management somewhere, wherever it falls, sheriff, us, or whatever. But it ought to have been paid when it was earned. And when we come back, and I now move for us to bring this issue back to us with the suggestions that have been made here tonight, and bring me something along that line, Mr. Chairman.
I second that motion.
Motion, second. As far as bringing it back, it's Monday, we have a scheduled meeting for Monday night at 6:00. Mr. Manager, are you going to be able to have those recommendations by then?
Hold up. What'd you say now about Monday night?
Monday, the 15th, is your next scheduled meeting. Other than that, then you meet July 20th. The budget has to be adopted by June 30th, so either it'd be Monday, the 13th, or a very special scheduled meeting between now and June 30th.
Mr. Colson. Could I pose a hypothetical?
Yes.
Supposing we don't pass it Monday night? It's more of a rhetorical question than anything.
Sure. Should it not be passed Monday night, I'll call a special meeting, and we'll set a date on that.
Because Monday's not the 13th, no?
15th.
Okay, all right. Because that might count, I wasn't saying 13th. All right.
So, a motion, second to table, to come back on Monday with recommendations for the budget. Any further discussion?
We adjourn. If it's in order, matter check, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hammond.
Thank you.
Any further commissioners' comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, second.
I'm about to freeze.